...Council and the Glendale Housing Authority. Can we have a roll call for the council, please?
Council members, Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Here.
For the Housing Authority.
Authority members Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Mincy.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Prozian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Sheriff Quintero.
Here.
Can we hear your report, please?
Agenda for the August 2nd, 2011 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, July 28th, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Before you, it was Director of Community Services and Parks regarding local winter shelter program. One A is council motion approving implementation of the proposed local winter shelter program and authorizing city manager or his designee to execute all necessary agreements and documents. At B is council resolution appropriating $100,000 in federal emergency solutions grant and City of Burbank general revenue funds to provide funds for the LWSP. At C is council motion providing direction of staff regarding use of general revenue funds up to $51,000 for the LWSP.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Friedman, members of the Glendale City Council, Chairman Quintero, members of the Glendale Housing Authority. For 12 out of the last 14 years, a regional homeless winter shelter program administered and funded by the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, also known as LASSA, under the jurisdiction of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, has been hosted at the Glendale National Guard Armory. In September 2010, the Glendale City Council authorized staff to develop a pilot local winter shelter program operated by a local service provider that would be smaller, it would be 50 beds instead of 150 bed, which is the size of the regional program, not funded by LASSA and not part of LASSA's regional system. So it would very much be a self-contained local program. At that time, Community Services and Parks staff identified the four components that would be necessary to enable us to implement a local winter shelter program. One would obviously be finding a qualified local service provider. Two would be finding a site that was suitable and met the requirements. Three would be securing funding for a local program. And four would be to obtain LASSA's and the county supervisors' offices' cooperation and support in our endeavor. To this end, the city has identified a local project sponsor in urban initiatives. The staff has secured some level of funding. The staff has met with county supervisors' office and LASSA to discuss our local winter shelter program and to discuss with LASSA the feasibility of LASSA continuing to provide some level of funding and to talk to LASSA about the potential use of the armory by the City of Glendale for Glendale's local program in lieu of LASSA's sponsored regional winter shelter program. Where we have not made progress is in finding a site that would be suitable and meet the requirements for an emergency shelter. Since last September, LASSA and the county supervisors' office have committed conceptually to supporting the local program for fiscal year 1112. On May 18th, the City of Glendale submitted a letter to LASSA to inform LASSA that the City of Glendale had not located a site but was still intent on implementing a 50-bed local winter shelter program that would take the place of the 150-bed regional program and requested LASSA's assistance and cooperation in reserving the Glendale National Guard Armory for the local winter shelter program instead of LASSA's regional program. On May 20th, the LASSA Executive Director responded and indicated that there would be a possibility that LASSA could reserve the Glendale Armory for our local winter shelter program, but that LASSA needed confirmation as soon as possible that Glendale had funding and had approval from the Glendale City Council in order for LASSA to turn its attention to securing another armory for its regional program other than the Glendale Armory. Throughout the planning of our local winter shelter program, we've been working with the City of Burbank on a partnership and on May 26th, the Burbank City Council tentatively approved and committed an allocation of up to $50,000 in general funds towards the local winter shelter program as a joint project, provided that Burbank homeless families and individuals would also be targeted for use of the program and subject, of course, to review and approval of a memorandum of understanding with the City of Glendale. The proposed local winter shelter program designed by Community Services and Parks staff would not be part of the LASSA County Regional Come-One-Come-All system and therefore would not be eligible for funding from LASSA unless LASSA were to make an exception. The local winter shelter program would be targeted to Glendale and Burbank homeless and would involve extensive case management and including mental health counseling and would rely on Glendale's own local network of service providers for referrals and cross-referrals. The local winter shelter program would have the ability to set aside and fill five permanent supportive housing vouchers from Glendale Shelter Plus Care Program, 10 transitional housing units from Glendale's Homeless Prevention Rapid Rehousing Program, as well as vouchers from the existing permanent and transitional housing programs such as Pathachieve Glendale Path Ventures and the Salvation Army. The program would run from December 15th to March 15th, just like the regular regional winter shelter program. The proposed budget for operation of a local winter shelter program, not including the housing vouchers, is $151,000. The funding sources identified thus far include $50,000 in a new emergency solutions grant that we received from HUD, $50,000 from the City of Burbank's general funds, which totals $100,000 and leaves a funding gap of $51,000 in order to operate our local program. Potential funding sources to fill that $51,000 funding gap could include LASSA funds to pay for rent, which is $40,000, which is the amount that LASSA pays National Guard Armory for the armory every year. And so if we were fortunate enough to be designated to use the armory, we would ask LASSA to also provide the funds to pay the state National Guard the $40,000 for rent. And then that would leave a shortfall of $11,000, which we are requesting direction from the City Council in terms of the potential of designating or appropriating general revenue funds to make up that final gap. In summary, at this time, we are requesting the City Council's authorization to implement the local winter shelter program, approval of a resolution of appropriation to appropriate the $50,000 from the emergency solutions grant and the $50,000 from the City of Burbank, and direction regarding the potential use and appropriation of either $11,000 or the $51,000 in general revenue funds, depending on LASSA's willingness to provide the $40,000 to pay for the rent for the armory. Now, Yvette San Valian and I, Yvette San Valian is the City's Homeless Coordinator, do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow afternoon with the LASSA Executive Director and a representative from the county supervisors' office to talk about the local winter shelter program and to indicate whether we've received the Glendale City Council's commitment to implement the program and to help fund the program. It's not guaranteed that even if we had those pieces in place that the county supervisors' office or LASSA would still agree to allow us to use the armory and that they would still agree that they would not continue to solicit a service provider to come into the armory and run the traditional regional program. But we will do our best to convince LASSA that we have a better option, that we have a local winter shelter program which would provide 50 beds in addition to LASSA using, designating another armory for their regular 150 beds so that LASSA would actually gain 50 beds if we're able to operate a local winter shelter program in addition to LASSA's traditional program at another armory. So that meeting is tomorrow afternoon, so we're hoping to get some direction from the City Council today.
Does anyone remember, and I'm sure someone does, why the Burbank Armory was taken off, or if in fact it was, I believe it was, Burbank no longer offers the armory? Anyone remember what the...
There was something, yeah.
I'd like to introduce Yvette San Valian. She's the City's Homeless Coordinator, and she might have that information.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, Chairperson Quintero, members of the Housing Authority. In the two years that the winter shelter was in the City of Burbank, the reasons why it came back to us was the Burbank Armory was undergoing renovations and also there was additional complaints from the citizens of the City of Burbank related to the operation of the winter shelter program with the mass of serving over 150 individuals. The winter shelter in Burbank was located next to a childcare center. There were issues related to the operations of the winter shelters through the Imago.
And so has the Burbank shelter now been taken off the agenda? It's not eligible for any of these programs?
The Burbank Armory is not available for this program currently.
And our current armory is across the street from an elementary school. Is that correct?
Family.
I have a question. So assuming that everything works out the way that you would like and you receive the funding from LASSA or the rent from LASSA, it's an $11,000 commitment for the general fund. My question is, if we were doing this the traditional way we've done it with LASSA, with 150 beds, what is the city's financial commitment?
The City, Mayor Friedman, the City does not financially commit to the regional-operated shelter. However, the City utilizes our continuum of care dollars and leverages over $2.5 million of services. While the clients are at the winter shelter, we have Pathachieve Outreach Team working with the clients who are staying at the winter shelter, connecting them to the emergency shelters and transitional housing and permanent housing programs. However, serving 150 individuals and the success of placements is not really high. Targeting to the 50 individuals or families and working closely with them for placements is much higher probability for us to place them in permanent and supportive housing programs. So we leverage over $2 million of our services for the regional winter shelter. In addition to that, cost for police department increases during the winter shelter season due to calls, costs to the fire department and fire paramedics increases because of events or circumstances that happen at the winter shelter, as well as the use of the library, the central library impacts the community, the Chamber of Commerce, and the impacts of the recreation center.
And it sounds as though, even if we go forward with this plan, that there's still a chance that LASSA will use our armory for their regional center, correct? Mr. Starbird?
Let me chime in that I think we would communicate to LASSA that the only reason we'd go down this road is if they did not operate the regional facility. If they chose to operate the regional facility, my recommendation to you would be that we actively oppose that. Glendale's not taken that position historically, and in fact, we're only among a very small number of communities that have hosted winter shelters on a regional basis. I personally served in communities with armories where they've actively opposed LASSA's efforts to open shelters and have been successful in that regard. In this case, Glendale has been a community that has consistently stepped up to the plate to address the issues of homelessness, not only in terms of the winter shelters, but in terms of the whole transition of care programming that we run. I think our message to LASSA needs to be that they need to look at a new model for these homeless services, especially the winter cold weather shelters. And that is, instead of anticipating regional facilities that they, in most cases, end up imposing on communities that then serve as a magnet to attract homeless to their community, they should be encouraging communities to take care of their own, which is what we're proposing here. And that is a substantially smaller shelter where we attempt to take care of our own homeless and not take care of homeless that are transported here from LA. In this case, we'd also be opening our facility to Burbank with their financial support and contribution, but a different model. And that's the message we should be taking to LASSA, is you shouldn't be discouraging communities from taking care of their own, you should be encouraging them and providing incentives, including financial support, for communities to take care of their own homeless. If they did, they wouldn't have some of the issues that they have with homeless, and each community would be taking more efforts to take care of their own, instead of trying to keep out these winter shelters, which is what happens across LA County. I think there's in the neighborhood of 17 or 18 armories in Los Angeles County, and that does not equal the number of cold weather shelters that are open across Los Angeles County. How many shelters do you know that are open in Los Angeles County?
There are about four.
Yeah, a small fraction of the armories that actually exist out there. That's because communities don't want to house them, because they can anticipate them being open on a regional basis, and their fear is that homeless people will come into their community, use the shelters, and it'll become a magnet. That's actually what our statistics have shown, is that frankly, our numbers of homeless continue to grow, and we believe a large part of that is because of the number of people that come into Glendale to utilize a shelter. So the philosophy here is, let's take care of our own, let's join with Burbank, you know? We're happy to try and take care of theirs as well, but we don't want to go beyond our borders and begin taking care of the region's homeless. We pay a very dear price for that. Schools pay a price, the business commercial district pays a price. You only have to walk down to our library any day and look in and around the library to see the impact of homelessness in our community. So without shirking what we think is our social responsibility, we think we need to draw back and begin to focus more on taking care of our own homeless and addressing that issue, which, everything we've seen, we still probably have to utilize the armory because we haven't found a suitable alternative location, but it would be a much reduced program of 50 beds instead of the roughly 150 that's operated now. Now, we'd like to convince LASSA to contribute funding for that as well. And we may be successful, we may not be successful.
Mr. Manukian?
How do you make a determination that a homeless individual is a Glendale homeless as opposed to an individual who's from LA? Do they have an address?
Yes, Councilmember Manukian. In May of 2011, city staff along with Pathachieve Glendale Outreach and Case Management Team conducted a vulnerability index survey. 3 a.m.s, we gone out to the community and surveyed homeless clients that are staying and sleeping on our streets. We've identified over 40 chronic homeless individuals who are in our community and are currently working with them for housing placements. In addition to that, Pathachieve Glendale has outreach teams available during a day while they ongoing...
How do you know they're Glendale homeless?
They've been in the City of Glendale, they in and they out, they became homeless in the City of Glendale. So typically...
Is there a criteria? Do you say, well, he was a resident of Glendale, now he's a homeless, therefore he's a Glendale homeless?
Typically, if they became homeless in Glendale, they are Glendale homeless, and if they slept in the City of Glendale the night before. What we've done with outreach and the vulnerability index, most of our clients have been chronically homeless for over five to 10 years, maybe 15 years, and are sleeping in our communities in the City of Glendale.
Just piggybacking on Mr. Manukian's question, when the regional shelters are open at our armory, how do the clients get there? Does LASSA actually bus them in from Los Angeles and from other places?
For the regional program, 211, which is a regional system, markets the Glendale as a regional winter shelter program. So a lot of clients, word of mouth or knowing the availability of shelters would come down to the City of Glendale. LASSA, Imago, did provide transportation and LASSA did provide access to transportation for clients to come out to the community.
So LASSA is bringing them in from other cities?
It's a drop-in shelter, so yes, clients are coming in. I mean, just going back to the statistics, 9% of our clients from last year were from City of Glendale utilizing the winter shelter program, about 3%...
9% of 150?
9% of 180. We were averaging about 180, high of 260 persons.
About 20 people?
So about 20 people, unduplicated. And then 3% were from City of Burbank, and about over 20 to 50 people were from City of Los Angeles, North Hollywood, the LA County area, and few were from out of state.
In the past few years, you would see buses by the YMCA. What program was that? Was that a different program or was it same?
The two years when the regional winter shelter was in the City of Burbank, we actually bused our Glendale clients to Burbank for the use of the winter shelter. So we took about 50 clients from here to Burbank.
They were being picked up at the YMCA?
They would be picked up from the armory and we would be taken to the Burbank Armory and then brought back in the morning. Last year, there was transportation from City of Burbank. They provided bus passes and tokens to the Burbank residents to access the Glendale winter shelter. Prior to that, they were busing clients from Burbank to City of Glendale. And there are bus pickups from various regions where clients can take the bus to come out to the community.
Specifically, do you remember the YMCA being a pickup spot or a drop-off spot?
Not the YMCA. The pickup and drop-off was at the Armory corner of...
Well, for sure, I saw buses, basically, I'm not sure if they were loading or unloading, I think they were unloading, but I did see buses unloading at the YMCA. It could have been a different program.
Might be a Y program.
Mr. Mincy?
Do you know the rental on the armory here, is that the same for 50 people or 150? Same rent? Or is it based on number of people?
I believe that's a flat rent that they pay for the use of the armory. I'm not sure if, the capacity is 150 based on the occupancy permit, but I believe that's a flat rate for the use of the armory.
Okay, I do have cards if there's no other questions at this time.
I have one question.
Mr. Weaver?
The $11,000, is that unbudgeted reserve in the general fund? Or is that, was that programmed in the budget?
Yeah, we need to note, the staff plans to ask LASSA to absorb the cost of the rental of the armory, but LASSA may say no. So the ultimate exposure could be $51,000 in the general fund if LASSA says no.
Reserves.
And my recommendation would be you make a one-time allocation from our unappropriated reserves in the general fund.
Undesignated reserve.
Yeah, I think what we'll, and this isn't going to happen overnight, but in time, our hope is we can bring down the number of homeless people that are staying in Glendale, because it has served, we think, as an attraction for homeless in downtown. Again, you only have to go, especially in the area of the library, and see the implications, especially in the wintertime with the homeless there. So this may be something that takes us some time to be able to winnow down the numbers that we're experiencing, but over time, I know, we spend far more than this just in security at the central library annually on homelessness. So the $51,000, although in these budget times, is difficult to swallow. It's a number that I think if we looked at the cost to us and the commercial businesses downtown and other institutions in the area in dealing with homelessness, it's a relatively small number if indeed it can reduce the exposure for us.
Do you have a question?
I have a question. As it says in the report, the local program with partnership with All for Health and Health for All is providing basic health care for homeless people and some medical intervention for other minor illnesses and injuries. Do you know who's providing health care for major medical conditions and injuries?
I'm sorry, major conditions?
Major illnesses and injuries.
Typically, our health system, we refer clients to Glendale Adventist, Glendale Memorial. All for Health is a free clinic, we work with them. If there's any need, we would refer clients to county hospitals as well as other available resources.
Okay, I have two cards. Natalie Kumuro, followed by Herbert Mulano.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm Natalie Kumuro, I'm Executive Director of Pathachieve Glendale. And once again, I am really impressed by the pragmatism and compassion of this body. The council here is not like many city councils across the county in terms of being hospitable to homeless programs, and I think you should be commended for that. This proposal, I don't want to stand in the way of this proposal, I know that there's a timing issue here and the staff needs to get direction to move forward, but I do have some concerns about the proposal as it is presented to the council. My primary concern is that it doesn't really speak to the issue of outreach. Pathachieve Glendale had a year-round outreach program with three full-time staff persons up until about three years ago. Budget cuts forced us to cut the third position, and we only brought it on during the winter shelter months when the demand for services increased. Last year, we had two additional workers during the winter shelter program because the number of people coming into Glendale through the winter shelter program necessitated that level of service. My concern here is that there needs to be a mechanism to getting people from the armory to other programs, and the beeline proposal in this is really insufficient. So I'm hopeful that even if you approve this moving forward, that there's still opportunity to work with staff to see if we can figure out some other arrangements that would be viable. We are presently not funded for a third outreach person, so I'm not going to be able to add another staff person at this time, but I do think that we need to be giving some thought on how this is going to work. There's some other concerns that we have about this. I want to make sure that the winter shelter program is more fully integrated into the existing year-round program. As you know, Pathachieve presents a wide range of services, comprehensive services that we provide to people throughout the year. The biggest project that we've been working on of late is the Vulnerability Index, the registry that Yvette was speaking to earlier. Our staff through our outreach team, our case managers and housing placement staff have been working with chronically homeless people to move them to permanent housing. Some of you may have read an article on last Sunday's paper about Adam. He was one of our first folks that we moved from the list into permanent housing. This is a program that will save lives. It's a very important program, I hope we can continue it. We need to work with the winter shelter program as a partner in this program so that we continue to do this work. Sadly, one of the regulars in the winter shelter program, after the program ended this year, she died on the streets. We don't want to have that happen again this year. So again, I want to express my appreciation to you and to the staff for your work on this, but I hope we can do more to make this a better program for the coming year.
Mr. Quintero?
A question for the Speaker. I don't see anything that sort of coordinates with some of the veteran homeless approach doing this.
Yeah, I didn't have anything to do with the writing of this proposal, but happily, we just received a $100,000 grant from the Veterans, Department of Veterans Affairs, and we'll start to implement that, I think, in September. And I'm very excited about that. That'll augment the funding for our staff and I'm hoping will give us some leverage to get some BASH vouchers, so we'll have housing subsidies available for veterans. So that project is definitely moving forward. We're definitely moving forward with our goal to end veteran homelessness in the coming year, and again, we hope to partner with the winter shelter to move more people that we identify into that program.
Maybe an answer from...
Did you have a, did you want to answer that?
Chairperson Quintero, City Council, Mayor Friedman. In trisum, addressing chronic veteran homeless persons, last September, City of Glendale Community Services and Parks received permanent housing dollars to house five chronically homeless veterans. We've placed four, already placed four veterans that were in our community in housing, we're working with the fifth one. Most recently, last month, we also learned that we were awarded another housing voucher for, again, targeting the veterans, that would serve another three to five veterans, and that grant will come onboard September of this year. So our goal is to work along with Pathachieve Glendale and the outreach team and identify the clients that are veterans have gone through the vulnerability index survey and going and place them into the housing programs.
Okay, thank you. Herbert Mulano?
Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council and Housing Authority, members and staff. My name is Herbert Mulano. I want to echo the commendable actions that the city has taken in taking some type of lead with regard to resolving some of these homelessness problems. I want to give you some of my background in relation to this. I participated in some of the workshops having to do with homelessness. And as you all know, I have an apartment building not far from here, and oftentimes, I find homeless people sleeping in the parking, suburban parking area, primarily during the wintertime. So I've taken some interest because I get to experience personally the issues having to do with hygiene and complaints of the tenants and so forth. And I understand how difficult an issue it is. I also am cognizant of the value that City Manager Starbird brings to you in his prior experience in working for other cities and being involved in Southern California issues, and how valuable that input comes to you. And it's something that I want you to think about as you consider a new city manager and the value that someone with that experience brings to these discussions. My concern right now are three questions, and they have to do with how much money does the city out of its general fund has funded towards this? Not federal money, not state money, so other sources. From the general fund, how much has the city contributed in past years towards this program? And is there a possibility for the city to make move so that in the future there'll be an expected amount that these agencies can count on? Second, are these winter programs supporting families with children who are homeless? And if so, how many are supported? And the other question is, how many of those are turned away during the winter, if any? The other question is, I was wondering if any of these topics have been presented in the Southern California Association of Governments, and if any of you have attended those and if these issues are being presented and discussed there? Thank you.
Thank you, that's my last card. Okay, does anybody have any comments about the question at hand?
We're moving from 150-bed shelter to a 50-bed shelter? Is that sufficient for our city? What happens if we get 51 people to apply? Or not apply, but...
Councilman Manukian, this will be designed as a 50-bed shelter. If we get more than 50 drop-ins per night, if it's a manageable number, like maybe one or two over the limit, we'll probably be able to take them in. If it's a greater number than that, then we would have to, as part of our continued development and evolution of our proposal, we would have to have a means to be able to transport those persons or provide transportation tokens to other shelters, and a listing of where other shelters are that they can go to. And so we would have to have our own little cross-reference and network system as part of our 50-bed shelter.
And what happens when you determine that, okay, this homeless individual is not a Glendale homeless? What do you do with them? Turn them away?
If we have space, we will house them. If we've got 45 occupying beds and five non-Glendale Burbank residents drop in, they will be housed.
Okay, thank you. I just feel that especially during the winters, I'd like to see actually the period expanded more than what we do. What months does it run, from December to March, is it, or January through March?
December 15 to March 15.
Yeah. What happens to the people who are freezing on December 14? You know, it's a big issue for me. I think it should be an issue of concern for the community. I'll, you know, I'll vote for this, but I think it shouldn't be an issue of funding. We should be able to receive the funding from different agencies and deal with the issues of homelessness. And how many of the individuals who are homeless kind of transition through continuum... Do we still have the continuum of care where individuals kind of transition from homelessness to self-sufficiency?
In terms of the regional winter shelter, it's very small percent, but however, the clients that are utilizing our Pathachieve services or any of our programs, we have about 60 to 75 persons transitioning to transitional housing and/or permanent housing programs.
Do we work with the individuals during the winter shelter program to help them get through their problems?
Yes, we work with the clients throughout the year. Once, if there's more programs available, we work with the clients a lot more intensively. And the purpose of this project is to work with them more intensively to be able to transition them into housing as soon as the three-month period is over, or as quickly as possible, and specifically for the families.
Are there anything else that we can do other than what we're doing in terms of helping homeless individuals get through their problems and other programs? Is this it? Just want to shelter them during the winter?
No, and that's where, I think it's important to keep in mind that, I think Glendale stands head and shoulders above certainly the vast majority of cities in Los Angeles County. There are many cities that put the... Many. There are a few cities, I'll say a handful of cities, that maybe put the kind of effort that we do into addressing the whole continuum of needs for homeless people. Two years, three years ago, when Burbank did its first year of winter shelter, they challenged us to contribute a matching $20,000 to support their shelter. So we invited the mayor of Burbank and their staff to come over and take a tour of our continuum of care of our homeless programs, and my comment to the mayor was, when you match the $2.8 million we raise and administer in homeless programs, then you can ask us for a match on the winter shelter program.
Did they don't have the continuum of care that we do here?
No. And in fact, what you'll find is the vast majority of communities don't have programs that nearly achieve the level of addressing the multiple needs that homeless have. I was very impressed in coming here to Glendale. I used to refer to Madler's Department as kind of the city's social consciousness, because we worked hard to garner grants in order to address the broad range of needs of the homeless community. And I will tell you, the vast majority of cities out there, they don't want to even see it. They want somebody else to deal with the problem. So you end up with Pasadena, Los Angeles, maybe Long Beach, Glendale, attempting to address the issues on a holistic basis. And some communities, frankly, they'll fight just having a cold weather shelter, let alone getting engaged in the significant issues and really trying to create programs that'll take people from homelessness on the streets to actually, you know, transitional housing and training and medical issues into providing them with a real sense that they can move out of this homelessness. Our program is really quite significant. We should be very proud of what Glendale has done over the years in building a very holistic program. My concern is, we can't continue in terms of the cold weather shelter, and I'll call it that strata of homeless, because I think they find a different set of issues with the cold weather shelter, homeless folks, many of them are very hardcore homeless, very difficult to reach. We can't continue to be a magnet and have, you know, 400 or 500 of these folks that we're dealing with every day, because, you know, it's our libraries, it's the private schools, it's the businesses. And when we saw the statistics coming out of the last winter shelter, it just struck me as, you know, this having a heart is costing our community a tremendous amount, and we really ought to be making an effort with LASSA to have a different model. They just need a different model. The regional centers don't work. The county had its grand plan, it's been about five years ago, they came up with an overall grand plan for regional centers to address homelessness?
Right.
That never got off the ground. That never got off the ground. We continue to address it the same way we do, because frankly, nobody wants to be a regional center.
Well, not, you know, not having a heart to deal with this issue makes us heartless too, so I don't want to be heartless.
I think we continue to try to deal with it. You know, frankly, I think we should have a philosophy of, let's take care of ours, and we should really be pressing LASSA. That should become their new model. Find incentives and help for communities to take care of their own.
But that's the issue that I'm kind of struggling with when you say ours. A homeless individual by definition is homeless and doesn't belong to it, is not part of any city or a community. So to say that we're going to deal just with ours and not deal with anyone else because it takes too much of our resources, I...
Put it this way, we shouldn't open up, shouldn't support the program here that allows the transport of homeless people in.
Right.
That we believe does then continue to add to our long-term numbers.
Well, that is problematic in terms of busing people into Glendale, and I think we should deal with homeless individuals that are sleeping in our streets, let's say, I guess we can call them Glendaleans, and that's fine. And I will continue looking into the other programs that we have. I think they're important programs for our community, to continue having some heart.
Well, we run some various programs here in Glendale, programs that you won't find in the vast majority of cities in Los Angeles County.
I'll move the item if there are no other questions.
Second? Okay, can we have a roll call for... Can we take these items separately or together?
All council motions.
They're all council motions, they can be taken together.
Okay, so is the motion for all three?
For all three of them, yes.
The second as well? Okay, can we have a roll call?
Councilmembers Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Cantaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn for council?
Move someone.
Motion to adjourn for the Housing Authority?
Okay. Do you want to adjourn? Yep.
I'll call the order, the Glendale Re-Dealing Agency for August 2, 2011.